If I can get my microphone on, yes, I hear you fine. Thanks Byron.
Alright, thank you.
Well, let's call our meeting to order. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Hutchinson Board of Education, conducted on August 10th via teleconference. Just a couple of announcements. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the ISD 423 website tomorrow, August 11th. And this meeting is also being livestreamed on HCVN and that link is available at least at the ISD 423 homepage. The roll call reflect that all board members are present along with our superintendent Darren Vanderheiden, our Director of Business and Finance Becky Bowle, and our Recording Secretary Tina Borliczek, and others that will be introduced as they, we get to that part of the agenda. If you would please keep your microphones muted and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I don't believe we received any public comments for this meeting, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed for separate consideration this evening? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved Director Bettenhousen.
Second Director Kimball.
Motion by Director Bettenhousen, second by Director Kimball. Assuming no discussion, we'll vote by roll call vote, beginning with Director Bernard.
Aye.
Director Bernard votes aye. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Aye.
Director Kimball votes aye. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. Director Wilkie?
Aye.
Director Wilkie votes aye and the motion is carried. Our program item this evening is district highlights presented by Dr. Michael Scott.
Good evening, everybody. We have a short list of a few highlights to share with you tonight. Wanted to start with summer feeding program. I had a number of meals served this summer. And if you see the graphics there on the left, those were the invites and the reminders about the summer feeding program. And this year there were over 10,000, 10,753 breakfasts to be exact, and 10,819 lunches. You can see the numbers compare there to 2019. It was a big increase, marketed increase. And some contributing factors to that were waivers that the Department of Agriculture allowed parents to pick up the meals without a student present, and also the ability to put the meals together so that there wasn't multiple days to pick those up. We're able to bundle the meals together, so. I know that Amy Hague last week spoke about the farm-to-school programming and shared some information about that. And their local farms are listed at the bottom as well that helped to continue to supply very nutritious meals. So thank you to all of our food service staff and all of the families that participated. And there's just some, one quick picture of what some of the meals look like. And this week is the final week for the summer meals. And one last thing, we had our annual, I believe it's our fifth annual student achievement retreat, where we've had leaders within our buildings get together to start talking about the data that we had from last year. And since we didn't have MCAs and a lot of testing that took place, standardized testing anyway that took place in the spring, they did do a lot of work today talking about goals that they have for the upcoming school years in terms of student achievement goals and diagnostic assessments that need to take place this fall with determine where students' learning is at and planning workshop week for our staff and what professional development they may need. So it was a very filled day with a lot of collaboration and planning within our buildings, each of our buildings. So I thank all the staff that were involved with that. And I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thanks Mike. Next item is the first reading of policy 808, COVID-19 face covering policy. This policy will go into effect presumably a month from now, once the board does the second reading and final adoption. The state of Minnesota, Minnesota Department of Health is requiring school districts to implement face covering requirements. And we are not required to actually have a policy. So this goes into effect actually after the beginning of school. Is there anything that you wanted to add to that as far as the timing Darren?
As you stated Keith, the requirement is in place regardless of the adoption of the policy. And just so other board members are aware of this, we did not receive this policy recommendation until last Friday. So we were really unable to do it earlier than that. But MSBA is promoting the policy and suggesting that the school boards pass it and adopt it.
And this is MSBA recommended verbiage, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So again, first reading, so if you know, board members have comments or you know, want to receive feedback on that. Also, it's available on the district website for public viewing. So if the public is interested in seeing the actual policy verbiage, they can view it there. And then if you have comments or questions, you could contact board members or the superintendent, again, before the September meeting. So a motion to approve the first reading of policy 808?
Pullman moved to approve.
Okay. Motion by Director Pullman. I'm sorry. Seconded by?
Go ahead Jeff.
Seconded by Bernard.
Seconded by Director Bernard. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote by roll call vote, beginning with Director Bernard.
Aye.
Director Bernard votes aye. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Aye.
Director Kimball votes aye. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. Director Wilkie?
Aye.
Director Wilkie votes aye and the motion is carried. Thank you. Next is the second reading of the policy series that you see in front of you, 100, 200, 300, 618 and 618P. So the first reading was a month ago, and I don't believe we've received any further questions or input regarding those policies. Is that correct Darren?
Yes, that's correct. There may have been some additional dramatic formatting changes, but nothing specific to the content.
Okay, so we're prepared to do the final adoption of these policies at the revision that was published along with the agenda today. Is there a motion to approve those for adoption?
Director Kimball, so moved.
Motion by Director Kimball and seconded by Director Wilkie. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote by roll call vote, beginning with Director Bernard.
Aye.
Director Bernard votes aye. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Aye.
Director Kimball votes aye. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. Director Wilkie?
Aye.
Director Wilkie votes aye and the motion is carried. Thank you. So we have a number of teachers who have achieved tenure status with the district. They have met all of the requirements and the principals are, have approved this list that you see on the screen. And we'd like to congratulate those individuals that have been with the district now three years and have successfully completed their probationary period. So congratulations to those individuals. Next up, we have a couple of contracts for approval. First item is the confidential employee group contract is recommended for approval for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2022. Becky, did you want to maybe give us a little background on this before we have a motion?
Sure, this contract is a group contract that covers three individuals, three confidential employees. As stated on the slide, it runs for the current school year and the following school year, ending June 30, 2022. This contract is a total compensation settlement of 6.87%. Year one increase is 5.37% total comp increase. Year two is 1.50% total comp increase. And all of the new money went on to the hourly wage. And this was recommended as a settlement which came in under budget.
And this was reviewed and approved by the finance committee as well?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that employment contract?
Pullman so moved.
Okay, motion by Director Pullman?
Second Bettenhousen.
Second by Director Bettenhousen. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote by roll call vote, beginning with Director Bernard.
Aye.
Director Bernard votes aye. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Aye.
Director Kimball votes aye. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. Director Wilkie?
Aye.
And Director Wilkie votes aye and the motion is carried. Next up, we have an individual contract, the Director of Technology Nick Schmidt. Employment contract is recommended for approval for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2022. Again, Becky, a bit of background?
Sure, this is our standard independent supervisory contract that we hold between the district and our directors. I am recommending a comparable worth adjustment of $4,500 based on a market study completed of similar sized districts. This is a total compensation settlement over two years of 6%. That's three year, 3%, excuse me, total comp settlement in year one and 3% in year two. There were no language changes or benefit improvements in the package.
Okay, and again, reviewed and approved by the finance committee, correct?
Correct, and it was in line with the budget.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve that employment contract?
Bernard so moved.
Motion by Bernard. Seconded by Director Wilkie. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We will vote by roll call vote, beginning with Director Bernard.
Aye.
Director Bernard votes aye. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Aye.
Director Kimball votes aye. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. Director Wilkie?
Aye.
Director Wilkie votes aye and the motion is carried. Thank you. Next up, I'd like to introduce Brian Moore, Director of Buildings, Grounds and Student Transportation, to present a recommendation to award bid package number one.
Good evening, everyone. If I see Mr. Colin Raybine is on the call tonight, and if any members of PAC want to add to what I'm saying, please feel free. A while back, we decided to go with a little bit of a different approach on how we're going to do this new elementary school as opposed to how we did the high school. With the high school, we had a general prime contractor. So we awarded one large contract to W. Goman, and then they hired all the subcontractors underneath that. We're taking a little bit of a different approach where ICS Consulting is, I guess, acting not only as our construction manager, but kind of as a general prime contractor managing the project. So tonight, we have five different bid packages that we'll have before the board this evening. And then there will be subsequent project awards coming up for the remainder of this project. So on July 16th, we had a bid opening for several portions of this. And Tina, if you want to turn the slide. So the first work was WorkScope 1, the earthwork exterior improvements utilities. So that's all the earthwork and underground utilities and parking lots for the new elementary school. And we recommend that dual contracting, they were the low bidder on this from Hutchinson, Minnesota. So it's good to see that a local contractor got a substantial piece of this project, the total award of $1,000,000. That included a base of the, a base award of the, of the project about the earthwork. Then there was one alternate in that where our, the main circle drive parking lot to West Elementary School is in pretty poor condition right now. So an alternate bid that we had on there was to mill and overlay that or rebuild that parking lot. And that was about $98,000. So the total award is slightly over $1,000,000. WorkScope 2 is the cast-in-place concrete. So all of the curbing and sidewalk and exterior contract to B&amp;D Associates out of St. Paul, Minnesota, for $1,217,300. Tina, next slide. WorkScope 3 was a precast concrete. We only had one bidder on this. Wells Concrete is the big player in, in the area. And they were probably the only company that could do some of the things that we were asking for. So that was slightly over $2,000,000 for that award. And they're the same company that did all the precast concrete for our high school. And we were very happy with the product that they delivered, the workmanship and all that. So we're happy to see this. WorkScope 4 was providing the steel. American Structural Metals out of Somerset was the low bidder on that for $299,477. And WorkScope number five for steel erection is Red Cedar Steel Erectors out of Menominee, Wisconsin for $146,900. And they also did the work on the high school, the same thing. Great bunch of people that were out there on site, quality work and on time. These bids were all, all in were slightly, significantly lower than our, what our estimates were. We're not going to count our chickens before they hatch because we have a lot of other bid packets that we'll come with, but if it come out in the future. But if this is any indication on how this project's going to go, we'll be under budget and, and on time, like Darren wants us to be on. Are there any questions that anybody has on this?
Okay, so all of these contractors are being approved as a package.
Correct.
Okay, any questions for Brian? If not, is there a motion to approve the bid package number one for pre-K through grade three construction project as presented?
So moved Director Bettenhousen.
Okay, so motion by Director Bettenhousen?
Pullman will second.
And Director Pullman seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We will vote by roll call vote, beginning with Director Bernard.
Aye.
Director Bernard votes aye. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Aye.
Director Kimball votes aye. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. And Director Wilkie?
Aye.
Director Wilkie votes aye and the motion is carried. Thank you. Thanks Brian. So next item is a consideration of a resolution for a base learning model for the 2020, 2021 school year and other COVID-19 related matters. For the public that may be just joining this meeting today, we, the board met last Friday. And I just wanted to kind of recap the, some of the highlights from that meeting to bring the, the public up to speed and also just as a, hopefully a reminder summary for the board. So I made some notes just to, to make sure I covered the main points. On August 7th, the Hutchinson Board of Education, Education met in a special meeting to hear the Hutchinson administrators' recommendations for reopening public schools in ISD 423. The board spent an hour and 40 minutes hearing the plans and asking questions about various concerns. For members of the public who didn't have an opportunity to hear that, I will summarize the key points. The administration conducted a survey, survey of families, students and staff, asking their opinion regarding which of two scenarios they preferred. Either in-person learning in a classroom or distance learning where all instruction would be conducted remotely online. 86% of the families and students said that they intend to return to school and preferred the in-person learning model. 43% of the students that responded on the survey were willing to forego riding a bus to school, which provides reduced rider density and allows for greater social distancing on our school buses. Minnesota Governor Tim Walz, the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education have created a decision-making flow chart to provide guidance for schools about their recommended scenario for reopening that you see on your screen. Their guidance is based on the case rate of COVID-19 cases in the past 14 days in each county, and this data will be updated for each county on a weekly basis. Based on the current case rate in McLeod County, which is currently 4.47 cases per 10,000 residents of McLeod County, the governor, Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education are recommending that Hutchinson schools reopen with a live-in-class learning model. Each of the five learning models has a list of state mandated requirements that must be implemented for each model. The administration presented these requirements in detail to the school board this past Friday. In addition to guidance that directs a school district towards a specific model, the Minnesota Department of Health has authority to dictate the model of delivery and the Minnesota Department of Health must also approve the plan that is adopted by our school board. A key point to remember is that the learning model for our district can and may change based on the rolling 14-day case rate. So every week, this is updated. If our case rate increases after opening school this fall, or even before opening school, we will adapt to the situation at that time and the state may require that we move to another learning model. The goal is to keep students, staff and families safe. We are expecting that there will be cases of COVID-19 in Hutchinson, but the goal is to keep that number of affected students and staff to a minimum, just like we do for the seasonal flu or any other infectious disease that affects school populations. If members of the public have questions about this decision-making process or about the specific plans for Hutchinson as discussed on August 10, you can access a video of that entire August 10 meeting on our ISD 423 website. And a frequently asked questions page and other COVID-19 resources will also be available on the ISD 423 website, I believe by this Wednesday, so two days from now. So are there any, any other comments about our, our meeting or kind of where we've been with this? The board has had a chance over the weekend to, to hear the plan, to ask questions. And hopefully, since our meeting on Friday, I've been able to answer whatever questions they might have. Is there anything else that we need to discuss regarding that? Okay, if not, are we ready to move into the adoption of the resolution as presented in the agenda?
Keith, I have one comment if I may.
Sure.
So I just wanted to preface this with, this is a very complex and nuanced subject. And bear with me while I give a fairly complex and nuanced opinion on this. I'm a physician in McLeod County in Hutchinson, and I've been a physician here since 2002. I'm also the Chief Medical Officer of Hutchinson Health, and I am the Incident Commander for COVID-related issues in regards to Hutchinson Health and have been that commander in tandem with Jim Lyons for the past few months. What we do as Incident Commander is create and, and develop policy and procedure regarding keeping our staff safe and, and how we deliver care to the patients that we have at Hutchinson Health. I'm also a business owner. Recently, my business had to shut down because of COVID. And I'm a parent. I have three kids in, in classes in different schools throughout Hutchinson's school districts. So I do bring a broad sense of views to this. I did want to acknowledge a couple of things before I get to my thoughts on this first. You know, I want to acknowledge the concerns that staff have brought forward. There's a lot of concern regarding safety. I understand that. We've had the same concerns in the hospital as well and in our clinics. It's something that is very concerning to, to me and I believe to all of the administrative support and leaders throughout the school district. It's something that we want to ensure as, as best as we can. And I believe there is a way to mitigate that risk going forward and that gets into the plan itself. I also want to acknowledge the uncertainty and the change that this brings to all of the staff. There's been a great deal of disruption with COVID over the last several months. We felt that desperately in the medical field and you're feeling it now, and I sympathize very much so. Unfortunately, for now, for the next few months at least, it's going to be the, the new norm. And I know there's some frustration about having access to the plan and what the plan looks like. And I also want to point out that that plan was only announced just 10 days ago by the governor, and we've had very limited time with it so far. I do believe there's been good progress made with that. I want to acknowledge what this, impact this has to students as well, what we've seen over the last several months with students as a way of indicating they should go back to school in person if possible. We've seen a lot of mental health issues with students over the last several months. Suicide, anxiety, social isolation have all been up. We've seen increased hospitalizations in inpatient mental health units. And we've also seen an uptick in suicides. So it is a very significant issue that we need to address. Staying at home tends to affect low-income families disproportionately to other, other people. They don't have the bandwidth to, to keep their kids at home. They're two-income households and have a lot of difficulty with that. In discussing with staff when I came on the school board, there's a lot, a great deal of at-risk kids who also can't tolerate this kind of change as well as other kids. They're finding that the at-risk kids are having even more difficulty in this climate than kids who always excel. That being said, there are some kids who normally excelled who are having difficulty as well. And then finally, there's the, the question about both sexual and physical abuse. Unfortunately, kids stuck at home with abusive, in abusive households and families are more subject to that. So that is something that needs to be considered as well. And it's for all of those reasons that the American Academy of Pediatricians, one of the big governing bodies of pediatricians throughout the United States, has recommended that kids return back to school in the fall. I want to acknowledge the parents, as Keith mentioned before, that they want their parents back. They need their parents back. In some cases, as I mentioned, those who have, are living low-income situations, they, they need kids back for them so they can go back to work and provide for their families. And they're also seeing their kids struggle and they want them to get back to some normalcy if they can. As a, as a plan, the plan goes from a professional standpoint, I like it. I think it's very flexible. I think it reacts to the local disease transmission within our community. I think it also is, and it's excellently structured in the sense that it uses an incident command structure similar to what we use at the hospital and the clinics that works with the Minnesota Department of Health on an ongoing basis. This is not something where the school district, the administration, or the school board is acting alone on their own cognizance. This is something that we are working with actual professionals at the state level and the regional level to respond to situations, not just the math on what the case count looks like in Hutchinson or McLeod County over the last two weeks, but also can respond to outbreaks and such. Many people may have heard in the news that there's an outbreak at one of the factories in Glencoe right now that's pushing up our cases in McLeod County. This is the type of thing that we would need to work together with them in order to respond to. I also feel that the plan does follow scientifically-based models and scientifically-based approaches to this. And, and because of that, I think that it can mitigate the risk while allowing our kids to succeed as best as they can. I want to highlight in general that in the world of COVID, we have to learn to coexist with this for a while. We can't hide from it totally. We can't escape it. It's something that we're being exposed to, whether we know it or not in our community. When we go to the grocery store, whether it's school, whether it's the clinic, whether it's the hospital, it's going to happen. And because of that, risk is there because we're having broad community spread. Kids are going to get it. Teachers are going to get it. Staff members are going to get it. But they're going to get it whether or not we're in school or not. It's going to happen. And I want to set that expectation that if we get three months down the line and we have some kids who have gotten it or some teachers that have gotten it, that does not mean that the process has failed. What that means is that it's here, it's with us, and we, and we need to recognize that and know that that's going to happen. I think that in general, I think this is a good plan. I think that it's a well-thought-out plan. I think the administration is doing their best to work through this, and I've been impressed with the level of detail they're going through to try to meet not only the letter, but the spirit of the directive from the governor and the scientific rigor. And for that reason, I do support this, and I recommend that you support it as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pullman. Any other comments, questions?
If, if, this is Kimball. Is, is this the time for the discussion? Or do we do the motion and second and then discuss before we vote? It's not a big deal, but if this is the time for the discussion, then yes, I have a few things to say as well.
Well, I didn't know if there were any other, yeah, kind of general items that we needed to cover, but if we, if we'd like to proceed with a motion regarding the resolution, I will read that. We can get a motion, second, and discussion on the floor. So is that okay with everyone? Okay. So the resolution for a base learning model for the 2020-2021 school year and other COVID-19-related matters. Whereas Minnesota Statute Section 123B.09 vests the care, management, and control of independent districts in the school board. And whereas the Superintendent of Independent School District 423, herein after the superintendent is responsible for the management of the schools, the administration of all school district policies, and is directly accountable to the school board. And whereas, when responsibilities are not specifically prescribed nor a school district policy applicable, the superintendent shall use personal and professional judgment, subject to review by the school board pursuant to School District Policy 302. Superintendent, whereas on March 13, 2020, Minnesota Governor Tim Walz issued Emergency Executive Order 2001, which declared a peacetime emergency in Minnesota in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas on July 30, 2020, Minnesota Governor Tim Walz issued Emergency Executive Order 20-82 and the Safe Learning Plan for 2020-2021, the Safe Learning Plan, which set forth five learning models: in-person learning for all, in-person learning for elementary students, and hybrid learning for secondary students, hybrid learning for all students, hybrid learning for elementary students, and distance learning for secondary students, and distance learning. And authorized all school districts in the state of Minnesota to select and implement an appropriate base learning model in accordance with and subject to the Safe Learning Plan. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Education, MDE, has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on educational issues related to COVID-19. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Health, MDH, has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on public health issues related to COVID-19. And whereas the superintendent and the administration of the school district have conferred with the school board regarding the available learning models, the current MDE and MDH requirements for each, and other relevant information. And whereas, based on the collective consideration of these factors, the superintendent has recommended to the school board that in-person learning will be the base learning model to be implemented at the commencement of the 2020-2021 school year. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 423 as follows. Section 1. The superintendent is hereby directed to implement the following base learning model to open the 2020-2021 school year: in-person learning for all. Section 2. The superintendent is hereby authorized, after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board, to select and implement a different learning model for the school district or any specific school buildings without school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of a different learning model is necessary and that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The learning model selected and implemented by the superintendent shall continue in effect unless and until the school board, in consultation with the superintendent and appropriate school district staff and public health officials, deems it in the best interest of the school district and its students to implement a different learning model. In Section 3, the superintendent will provide regular updates to the school board regarding the school district's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH respectively. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
Pullman, so moved.
Okay, motion by Director Pullman?
Second, Director Wilkie.
Second by Director Wilkie. Discussion?
This is Director Bernard. I just want to say that I really respect and appreciate Dr. Pullman's perspective on this. I also really respect our guidance that's given to us from the MDE and the governor. I'm not a health professional, but I do feel like it is my responsibility to relay the concerns of our constituents that I have heard. Over the weekend, especially after our special board meeting on Friday, I've had over 100 conversations with staff, families, parents, and students on this issue, and not one person is enthusiastically ready for in-person for all. So I just feel like this is my platform to voice some of my concerns. And for me, I think it's more about our infrastructures that I'm concerned about. And in this model, what I'm, I haven't heard an answer on that feels good to me about in-person learning is related to our increasing COVID-positive case numbers and maybe our inability to locally process those tests in an adequate format. I'm unsure that we can procure enough sanitizer, PPE equipment in time. I'm worried about the district nurse staffing and our building nursing staff having what they need. I'm worried about the high temperatures at Park Elementary, and I'm really worried about our lack of substitute teachers that would make this sort of model as a business model effective. So I just want to voice those concerns and also kind of state too that I think that if we can avoid distance learning at all measures, that would be maybe, in my opinion, again, the, a, a thing to avoid. And so I'm interested in looking at a hybrid model where we could potentially keep all of our students in person at some level longer, hopefully. So that's, that's all I have to say.
This is Director Kimball, and I have some of the same concerns. On Friday, Dr. Pullman told us that there was not enough testing supplies. And then I heard from my own doctor over the weekend, as I think some of you did too, that there's a four-to-five day wait for those results. I, I really can't get past that very easily. I haven't heard from any teachers, peer professionals, or parents that are happy about a full-time everyone back to school. I believe that the hybrid model for all kids, yes, they'll be in school less, but I think the potential is that they'll be in school longer, that there won't be a, right away, there won't be a change to their schooling. They'll get to know their teacher, and at the same time, they'll be socially distancing. They'll be learning new safety practices. You're going to have to teach kids how to wear masks, how to keep them on, when they can take them off. You're going to have to teach kids how to, how they can use the bathroom, how they can be safe in their classrooms, how they can be safe on the bus. It isn't something that they're just going to learn. I also feel like the governor gave each district the option to be more restrictive, that he did not say that this is where you have to start. This is where you can start, but he, but we can always be more restrictive. I also agree that the last thing we want to do is distance learning for all. That's a tough, that's tough. And I think, Dr. Pullman, you told us the many reasons it's tough. We have to have the masks, shields, and hand sanitizer from day one for everybody. Let's see, what else? There was a very successful summer school program with small groups of students, and I haven't heard of any staff or students that became ill from that. And to me, that's a perfect example of how the hybrid would work. We, I spent the day at the high school, as did Tiffany, and there's a lot of concern, there's a lot of fear. And we heard an awful lot of people say that the hybrid was a reasonable place to start rather than having all of our students back. I think that might be all that I have to say.
Thank you.
I have one more thing to ask, and I don't know if this is the space to have the discussion. But I think no matter what model we start our school year in, I think our staff may need some more time to plan. I think on top of what we ask them to do to prepare for the school year and a normal year, they're given that time, and I would like to open discussion up to see if we could change the school date back two days to allow our staff more planning time under these COVID restrictions.
Darren, did you have a response to any of those questions?
Yeah, as far as the school calendar goes, that would require an adoption of an altered calendar by the school board. And if we would consider something like that, we'd probably want to do that sooner than later just to let our, our families and, and kids know if that's the case. So instead of starting school, the scheduled first day of school, I'm assuming Tiffany, you're referring to maybe starting a couple of days after that, but still prior to the holiday weekend.
Correct. Perhaps September 2nd.
So I would just like to remind the board that, you know, where we start or where we think we're starting today may not even be where we end up starting come the first day of school. Once, every, every week, the, the rolling 14-day case rate is updated. And based on that, if there's a, an upward trend in cases in McLeod County before the start of school, we may look at, you know, or be asked to look at a hybrid model or something other than what we are proposing today. You know, based on what we know to be true today, the Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Education thinks that this is a safe way to open. But again, we, we very likely will, will move back and forth between, you know, one or more of these models. So again, this is just kind of a place to start based on what the health professionals in the state think is, is safe to do in Hutchinson. So I, I guess I would expect change. The thing that we need to keep in mind is that we have five days to, to make changes to the next model. So when, when the data comes out on a Thursday, we have till the next Thursday to implement whatever the model is that they're recommending for Hutchinson. So if you have any further comments on any of that, Darren?
Yeah, the only other comment I would make is on the PPE. We've got some of those same concerns here. The state has assured us that they're going to provide those items to us prior to the first day of school, but I can't tell you we have those yet. The regional support centers, from my understanding, they don't have them in possession yet either, but the state continues to tell us that they will be there for us. So the mask, the shield, those items, along with test kits for our educators. And as soon as we get those, I'll certainly let you know. But we, we share those same concerns as well.
So I guess a question that I have for you, Darren, and for the administration on the Safe Learning Plan slide. Step number three specifically states that public schools with their incident command team will evaluate their ability to implement required and recommended health best practices. So attached to this in-person plan or model is a whole set of requirements that our district must fulfill in order to, to safely implement that model. And I guess my question to you and our administration is, you know, we've reviewed that and assessed our ability to implement all of those things. Are, are we prepared to do that?
Yeah, we certainly are, and we wouldn't recommend in-person learning if we weren't able to meet those standards. So that's really how we've spent our time is in preparation for and planning for those items. And I feel pretty good about where we're at right now with that. But that is on our mind, and that's what we're doing on a daily basis right now.
This is Director Bernard with one more question. In the, if, if starting school in the in-person model, do we have assurances for our staff that have identified as medically vulnerable? Do they get to keep their job? Do they get to work from a distance sort of relationship? That, I'm concerned about that in this vote.
Yeah, and just a bit more information on that. I know we talked a little bit about that on Friday as well, but the ones that we have been aware of, we did survey our staff to get an indication of those people that had those kind of medical concerns. We have worked with them in a collaborative process over the last few days here to come up with plans for them. So there's a lot of different programs out there. There's a lot of different options. And I think our HR department's done a nice job working individually with them.
This is Kimball again. I have another question. The governor offered families a choice to be in school or distance learning for medical reasons or for safety concerns. And I've had several staff people say that they believe that that was also offered to school staff. I spent some time last night trying to find it. I'm kind of struggling with technology, but is that true? Do we, are we offering the same to our staff?
Yeah, as I had mentioned, we are working individually with those staff members that have medical conditions to try to accommodate them as much as possible. And the things that maybe were said at the press conference, some of those were contradictory to what's actually in the executive order. So if you go to the executive order, it specifically outlines it in that document.
Thank you. That might be why I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it's in the executive order, and I think it's number 13 if you want to go to that document. Becky, am I correct in that it's number 13 in the executive order?
Yes, it is. And Joelle, and I can send you that reference as well, if that's helpful.
I'd also like to add that this, for families and students, is entirely optional. If, for whatever reason, medical or otherwise, you don't feel comfortable with in-classroom learning, you, you always have the option to do distance learning. So that is, is always available. Darren, also a question, I think, came up about can people, if they start with one option, distance learning, for example, and want to go to in-classroom or vice versa, you know, after the school year starts, will there be an opportunity to switch those paths?
Yes, and that will come out in our frequently asked questions. And that's one of the top questions that we've been getting either through phone calls or emails. So if your family determines that distance learning is the right model for you, and then later you decide you want to come back in person, we're going to have some natural breaks in the school year. We're, we'll work with families on doing that mid-try, end-of-try during those times to get them back into school if they choose to do that. If they want to go from in-person to distance learning, that might be a little bit easier transition, and that may be due to a family situation or a health condition. And we would do that certainly in a quicker process than waiting for that natural break.
Okay, any other comments, discussion, questions?
Keith, one other question that I've had a number of time from parents is, and I think I've talked with Joelle and Tiffany both about this. It's about the idea in the survey itself. We asked parents about distance learning and in-person learning. And the reason there wasn't a hybrid and an in-person learning question is the state really never gave us that option. So as an example, as a family, you couldn't select hybrid learning, and then another family select in-person learning in that same modality. So, you know, and a practical way to look at this is one family couldn't go every day, and then somebody else go every other day. So it was either you're in hybrid, you're in person, or you select distance learning. And that's why it was not an option in the survey. Am I making sense with that?
This is Director Kimball. I have a question. I know daycare is a huge concern for families. And I still feel that if given some time, that families can, can work through those issues. But say we go to a Thursday, and it changes by the next Thursday, families are going to be scrambling. Whereas if we start with a less, a more restrictive model, like a hybrid model, and we can stay there longer, I believe that would help with the daycare problem. and we can stay there longer, I believe that would help with the daycare problem. And then I also have a comment from especially staff from Park Elementary. That place is very hot. I don't know how many of you have been on the second floor or the top floor of Park Elementary on a hot fall day. And then add masks to that. It's a real problem, and staff will make the most of it. But I worry about our students who are going to feel like they have a fever just because they're at Park Elementary.
This is Director Bettenhousen. So I got lots of calls, as well as everybody else on the board, I'm sure, this weekend. I did talk to lots of parents who expressed their concerns about the hybrid because of daycare, because they've talked to their daycare provider, and they said, "Look, you're either here all week or you're not here. We can't do a Tuesday, Wednesday, and every other Friday unless you can find another family to fill that spot." Because daycare in Hutchinson is hard to come by. A lot of places are full. A lot of places have waiting lists. And the daycare providers are like, "Look, we can't do partial plans, or you have to pay for the full time, even though your kid's only here half the time." So the hybrid thing does work for some people who don't have to worry about daycare. And I get what you're saying, Joelle, and that if we all of a sudden have to switch to it, a week from now, then people are going to scramble. But if we just say this is what we're doing for the next three months, then people are going to scramble now, and they're going to be stuck having to decide whether they go back to work, whether they keep their kids home, or whether they go to a different school district. I've talked to many families that said they're going to go to the charter school because they're opening up, or they might take their kids to Glencoe because they're opening up. So, I mean, parents have that choice of going, taking their kids wherever they feel comfortable, and I totally support that. But I think as a board, our obligation is to open up the school as safely as we can for our staff and our students and allow the kids to come to school every day, learn. And imagine going to work on Monday and then not having to go Tuesday. But then you get to go Wednesday, but you don't have to go Thursday. We'd never get anything accomplished if you're off again, on again. I mean, going on vacation for a week is a time to get away and relax. But if you're there one day, gone one day, there's no continuity. There's no structure. And that's what our kids need. Our kids have been missing structure since March. And a lot of them are already in dangerous situations. If you go to Walmart, Cashwise, Menards, all these places, all of our students are working there. So we need to get them back in school where they can learn and have a structure and a schedule, get good meals, and get back to some normalcy. Well, they're going to have to wear a mask, and there's going to be differences that happen. It didn't happen before, but I think it's kind of our obligation to get the kids on the right track and get started with school on time and get some normalcy back to our lives, whatever that is.
I agree with what Byron just stated there. I'd echo all of that. I also just want to touch on what Dr. Pullman said earlier about the anxiety, the uptick in suicides, the sexual and physical abuse. You know, those are all definitely prevalent things in any point in time in life, but I think they've been amplified with a lot of this that's been going on related to COVID. So that's a concern that I have as well. And just trying to get back to some semblance of, like you said, quote-unquote, "normalcy," if possible. The other concern I have about starting in a more restrictive fashion is, you know, how do you dial forward then? At what point are you able to do that and be able to feel a bit about doing that? So what does that even look like? How would you be able to do that? So those are the concerns that I have about starting off more restrictive and not starting off in-person.
One thing I just wanted to add, and I know I am in no way trying to compare the coronavirus to the flu. But when my son was a senior in 2017, it was in February, I know there was one week when we had up to 70 students and staff that were missing from just the high school because of the cold and the flu. So I know people are going to say, "Well, jeez, if we have 20 kids that have COVID and they're out of school, what are we going to do?" Well, we've had this before, but nobody, I don't want to say nobody was concerned about it, but nobody probably knew about it. I mean, we go through these spurts where we have flus and viruses, and kids are missing school. If you miss two, three days of school, you're falling behind. So can you imagine missing two months of school or three months of school trying to do a hybrid where you're only getting half the education that you would normally get? We're definitely going to start falling behind if we don't go get back to some normal schedule if we can.
Byron, what happens if our numbers soar so high and we are forced into a distance operation again? Then we have no contact. I'm just, I'm going to push back on your flu correlation here a little bit because in that situation, we are not implementing 14-day quarantines for people, whether they test positive or not. If we have an incident show up in a second-grade classroom, and maybe there's somebody that tested positive in that group, we're sending that whole group home potentially. And now we are forcing a distance situation upon them. So I just want us to really like recognize COVID for what it is, that it is different, and the policy around it is different.
Yeah, I agree. And like I said, I didn't mean to diminish it at all and say that COVID is the flu. I didn't mean that. I just meant that I don't think people realize that on any given week in our schools, we have a ton of kids missing because of illness or sickness or whatever it is. And so when we start getting, you know, it shows up in the paper that we have 20 kids that are missing school, I don't want people to say, "Well, holy cows, that's 20 kids." I mean, 20 kids is just a normal week for us. But I mean, I hope we don't have that, but I just want people to be prepared for, you know, the numbers that come out. I guess that's what I was trying to say. Like I said, I don't want to compare COVID to the flu because I don't mean that at all.
You know, just to point out, you know, when it comes to contact tracing and isolation of people who have potentially been exposed, that potentially could happen in either model, right, in the full in-person or the hybrid model. You're talking about either one. So you'd have to identify anyone who was in that six-foot boundary for greater than 15 minutes. And chances are, it's going to be most of the classroom. And like you said, yep, they're going to be off for 14 days. Only the people who become symptomatic are going to get tested, and the turnaround times is going to be what it is. And so you're looking at disruption in either way. And that's why I said earlier that we need to learn to kind of live with this for a while. It's going to suck. It's going to be hard. It's going to, we're going to face some challenges along the way. But there really is no absolute defense against that. You know, we're all saying we don't want to do distance learning on a long-term basis. I don't think anybody wants that. But that means the compromise is, is we're going to have to mitigate this risk as best we can, and we're going to have to respond to the situations as they come. And the situations will come, and that doesn't mean we fail. It just means we have to deal with it.
Well, the seasonal flu actually is, and it varies from year to year with that particular version of the seasonal flu. But normally statistically, seasonal flu is actually more deadly to school-aged kids than COVID-19. I was talking with one of the physicians at the Hutch Mount Medical Center just a week or so ago. And I guess I had never heard this, but they said back in 2009, when the H1N1 outbreak occurred, there were classes in McLeod West that were down to like two kids left in a classroom. All the rest were out with H1N1. And again, that was deadly to kids under 10. So I'm not sure why we're handling this so differently. But again, the younger you are, the way it seems, when you look at the numbers in Minnesota, the less likely you are to have a case, much less a complicated case. So, and I think one other thing that has really created a lot of anxiety is just the lack of definite information. You know, the, nothing will be finalized until this board makes a decision and the administration is able to move forward. So putting definite information out for people to be able to make plans and understand what's happening, you know, has just really, I think, created a lot of additional stress for students and families to not know where they're at. A lot of things need to happen in a very short time, and that has, I think, compounded our situation. So any other comments, discussion?
I have a question. This is Kimball. I have a question for Darren. Do you know off the top of your head the results of staff, a staff survey? I believe it was given to staff in the spring. I didn't see it. I don't know. But how do you think staff is feeling? Because I'm getting a lot of fear and anxiety.
Yeah, well, I certainly believe there are some individuals out there that have some concerns. We did survey our staff a couple of times. Becky Bowle put the last survey together along with the HR department. So that was a recent survey that we did. I think in general, for the most part, it was pretty positive. And I know Brian Tillman also did a survey here recently with EH members as well. So we've had a chance to take a look at those. But we can certainly share all of those results with you if you'd like to see them. Becky, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
I don't. We did start working on a one-to-two-page-at-most summary of the survey results, and we've agreed to share them with one of our bargaining groups. And I'd be glad to copy you, Joelle, on the summary once we have it finalized. But it was pretty positive. I don't really have anything additional from here.
Further discussion?
Just want to say one more thing. Sorry, Mr. Camrath. I just want to recognize that in talking to our staff, I think what I've learned is they are incredibly passionate about what they do, and they want to teach in the classroom, right? But it does not mean that they do not have legitimate fears and concerns about returning to work. And I just want to say on a personal level, I've really enjoyed digging into this issue. I'm proud of our district, and I'm anxious for the school year like everybody else. But thank you for the space to have the discussion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we will vote by roll-call vote on the resolution as read. We will begin with Director Bernard.
Nay.
Director Bernard votes nay. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Nay.
Director Kimball votes nay. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. Director Wilkie?
Aye.
Director Wilkie votes aye, and the motion is carried. Thank you all for a very considered discussion. Do you have any other, any other comments or anything to finalize, Darren?
No, I think between today's discussion and Friday's discussion, we've covered a lot of it. I would just reiterate that the frequently asked questions will be out by Wednesday. Parents can certainly give their building principal the call if they have questions. And we're going to get our plans posted just as soon as we can, the in-person, the hybrid, and the distance learning plan.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, so the frequently asked questions will be available on the ISD 423 website by Wednesday. But if you are in a situation that you think is not answered by those questions, or yeah, do not hesitate to call your building principal. They are the COVID officer for that building, so do not hesitate to contact them to get help. Okay, next up is a resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general and special election. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, number 423, State of Minnesota, as follows. It is necessary for the school district to hold its general election for the purpose of electing three school board members for terms of four years each, and a special election for the purpose of electing two school board members for terms of two years each. The clerk shall include on the ballot the names of the individuals who file or who have filed affidavits of candidacy during the period established for filing such affidavits as though they had been included by name in this resolution. The clerk shall not include on the ballot the names of individuals who file timely affidavits of withdrawal in the manner specified by law. The general/special election is hereby called and elected to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, the third day of November 2020. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A.11, the precincts and polling places for this general/special election are those polling places and precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district and which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The voting hours at those polling places shall be the same as for the state general election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said general/special election to be provided to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part at least 74 days before the date of said election. The notice shall include the date of said general election, said general/special election, and the office or offices to be voted on at said general/special election. Any notice given prior to the date of the adoption of this resolution is ratified and confirmed in all respects. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said general/special election to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days before the date of said general/special election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said general/special election, and to cause two sample ballots to be posted in each polling place on Election Day. The sample ballot shall not be printed on the same color paper as the official ballot. The sample ballot for a polling place must reflect the offices, candidates, and rotation sequence on the ballots used for that polling place. Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said general/special election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the date of said election. The notice of election so posted and published shall state the offices to be filled and set forth in the form of ballot below, and shall include information concerning each established precinct and polling place. Clerk is authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for use of the optical scan voting system to be posted in each polling place on Election Day. The clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials as may be necessary for the proper conduct of this election, and generally to cooperate with election authorities conducting other elections on that date. The clerk and members of the administration are authorized and directed to take such actions as may be necessary to coordinate this election with those other elections, including entering into agreements or understandings with appropriate election officials regarding preparation and distribution of ballots, election administration, and cost sharing. The clerk is further authorized and directed to cause or to cooperate with the proper election officials to cause ballots to be prepared for use at said election in substantially the following form, with such changes in form, color, and instructions as may be necessary to accommodate an optical scan voting system. And there you see a sample of the ballot, so it would be in substantially that form. Again, we are voting for three members for a four-year term or up to three, and up to two members will be elected to a two-year term. And candidates, by the way, have until tomorrow at 5:00 PM, I believe, to file their intent to be on the school board ballot. You also need to select when you're filing, if you are filing for a four-year term or a two-year term. So just some information for potential candidates that might be out there. Optical scan ballots must be printed in black ink on white material, except that marks to be read by the automatic tabulating equipment may be printed in another color ink. The name of the precinct and machine readable identification must be printed on each ballot. Voting instructions must be printed at the top of the ballot on each side that includes ballot information. Instructions must include an illustration of the proper mark to be used to indicate a vote. Lines for initials of at least two election judges must be printed on one side of the ballot so that the judge's initials are visible when the ballots are enclosed in a secrecy sleeve. The name of each candidate for office at this election shall be rotated with the names of the other candidates for the same office in the manner specified in Minnesota law. If the school district will be contracting to print the ballots for this election, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to prepare instructions to the printer for layout of the ballot. the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to prepare instructions to the printer for layout of the ballot. Before a contract in excess of $1,000 is awarded for printing ballots, the printer shall, if requested by the election official, furnish in accordance with Minnesota Statute Section 204D Point 04, a sufficient bond, letter of credit, or certified check acceptable to the clerk in an amount not less than $1,000, conditioned on printing the ballots in conformity with the Minnesota election law and the instructions delivered. The clerk shall set the amount of the bond, letter of credit, or certified check in an amount equal to the value of the purchase. The individuals designated as judges for the state general election shall act as election judges for this election at the various polling places and shall conduct said election in the manner described by law. The election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots cast, and submit them to the school board for canvas in the manner provided for other school district elections. The general election must be canvassed between the third and the 10th day following the general election. The school district clerk shall make all campaign financial reports required to be filed with the school district under Minnesota Statute Section 211A Point 02, available on the school district's website. The clerk must post the report on the school district's website as soon as possible, but no later than 30 days after the day, date of the receipt of the report. The school district must make a report available on the school district's website for four years from the date the report was posted to the website. The clerk must also provide the Campaign Finance and Public Disclosure Board with a link to this section of the website where reports are made available. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Pullman so moved.
Motion by Director Pullman?
Second, Bettenhousen.
And seconded by Director Bettenhousen. Any discussion, questions?
I'm not sure who this clerk person is, but they sound very important.
They're gonna be busy.
I'm glad you didn't make them read it.
You know, I was gonna have you sing part of that, just to, you know, kind of break this up, but... So if there's no further actual discussion, voting in, in alphabetical order, beginning with Director Bernard?
Aye.
Director Bernard votes aye. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Aye.
Director Kimball votes aye. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. Director Wilkie?
Aye.
Director Wilkie votes aye, and the motion is carried. So, and then the next item is actually a required procedure. We do this every year, whether we have an election or not, just in case in the upcoming 12 months, we needed to conduct a special school board election to fill a vacancy, or if we were to have a levy election. So, but I don't want to confuse anyone, because what this says is that we're going to do all of our polling in one place, which is not what is going to happen in November. So Tina, if you want to back up one slide there, I'm just gonna read the, the title of this resolution, which fulfills the legal requirement. The resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Again, this is not the case that will be happening in November. So voters should go to their normal polling place where they would vote for a statewide election, and not come to, in this case, it's designating the, the rec center as the one polling place. So again, this is a, an annual item that is passed by this school board. So is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So move Director Wilkie.
Okay, motion by Director Wilkie.
Second, Bettenhousen.
Second by Director Bettenhousen. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we will vote by roll call vote, beginning with Director Bernard?
Aye.
Director Bernard votes aye. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Aye.
Director Kimball votes aye. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. Director Wilkie?
Aye.
Director Wilkie votes aye, and the motion is carried. Thank you. Next up is committee reports, facilities?
Yes, there's a correction to the slide you have. It's Pullman and not Bettenhousen on the facilities committee. Anyway, we met on August 5th. We met by the high school tennis courts. Brian Moore gave us those bid recommendations that we approved tonight. We talked about the middle school parking lot. It should be done by, I'm not sure. I think, I wrote down middle of August. The stadium work is a little bit behind, the bleachers. Softball field, the new softball field will have grass planted soon. Brian Moore is making plans with his maintenance crew for extra cleaning in the buildings and to make sure that the air circulation is as good as it can be in each building. Then the project oversight committee, we, we've been meeting every other week. Two meetings ago, we chose interior design colors and materials for West. The addition will have a new, new address, and the address is 805 School Road Southwest. Let's see. Then at our last meeting, we started discussing the park remodeling and looking at spaces. And there needs to be more in-house discussions concerning special ed spaces. We continue to meet every other week. Thank you.
So, thank you, Joellen. Yes, the, the project oversight committee, which you're a member of, has now met how many times for this project?
In the twenties somewhere, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's an amazing number. Like you say, you meet weekly, so thank you so much for the, the dedication of time, excuse me, of time to make sure that this project goes smoothly. So, thank you. Next up is finance?
Yes, this is Director Wilkie. Finance committee met today. So we went over the financial reports. The July revenues are on track. The, we also went through the expenses. Those are also on track overall. We did discuss, we did an enrollment update. So obviously with the COVID situation, our enrollment is very fluid right now. We have budgeted for a reduction of 51 students, and that may or may not be enough. It's, it's tough to say right now. Our kindergarten numbers are at, as of, I believe, this morning. Becky, you said that, I think she, that's the last time she checked, there was at 168, which is below our budget projection. And then we also have some that have submitted paperwork to end enrollment. You know, and 52 had indicated in that survey that they'd be selecting a different schooling option as well. So, and then out there, there is also a larger number of families that are considering homeschooling as well. The budget should break even this year. But as always, depending on enrollment and funding and things like that, we, we could have a deficit starting the following year. And just as always, Becky is extremely good at her job, and will continue to track the various scenarios and projection models, and provides up, update to us as a board. We discussed the lease of the TAP space, and that will likely, TAP will likely not be moving into another existing district building in the next few years. So we did discuss looking at that, at the space that they're presently in, and that there would be potentially an opportunity there to negotiate a two-year lease on that space. We did kind of go back and forth in the meeting, and Becky's gonna continue to negotiate a lower month-to-month rate on that to stay in a month-to-month option, or move forward with the two-year option. Let's see. Our hiring, we do have some positions open. We have the bus rider positions, three of those. We have one in food service and three building education assistants. Two new teacher positions, one in first and one in fifth grade. And we're designating one distance learning teacher per grade level in kindergarten through five. We still do have a couple of folks in IT and custodians that are on voluntary layoffs. We did discuss, we did have a conversation about board, school board compensation. The last compensation increase for the school board was 15 years ago. In comparison to other districts of similar size, we are average, but we are low as compared to other local boards. And so we're just trying to remain a, you know, a vital and, and very, a good board. So taking a look at that compensation structure, just to continue to attract, you know, professional and qualified candidates to follow, file for the election is what our goal is. We're gonna discuss this more at the August quarterly meeting. And we also took a look at the agreements and the contracts that were, I believe, yeah, these are the ones that we approved this evening. They've already been discussed. And then the birth of grade five facility planning, as we went ahead with those bid packages, the budget is in great shape for the construction project. And we already approved that bid package, so... And the last thing I guess would be is that we are looking to move back to an in-person model for these particular board meetings and committee meetings. And so we need to do some, you know, digging on that to understand what that all looks like from where we could hold them to being able to broadcast and that kind of thing. So I know that there'll be more work to come on that, but I think that is the goal, is to get back in person. That's what I have. Becky, anything that I missed there? Anything that, anything that I should, you should highlight differently?
I think just, that was a great report. Just one point of clarification would be with respect to the family survey that we completed. There were 52 that indicated they plan to leave the school district. However, when we scrubbed that data and looked closer, there were 21 that weren't a, a double up of what we already had in our ad drop listings. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then of those 21, the vast majority were not opting another district or another charter school option. They were opting for homeschooling. And we'll continue to update those lists and try to obtain as much information as we possibly can in order to retain as many students as possible in our school system.
Okay, thank you. Parks Recreation Community Ed?
It was not a meeting this month, but we'll be meeting hopefully in September if there's an addition of community education programming.
Thanks Tiffany. So, and just to announce our upcoming board meetings, we will be having a quarterly school board meeting on August 24th at 5:30 PM. Location to be determined. And then our next regular school board meeting will be on September 14th at 5:30 PM. Again, location to be determined. As Chris said, we discussed this at finance today, that if we're gonna go back to an in-person learning model, we'd like to, to also be able to have in-person meetings if possible. So we're looking at, if City Hall is not available for, for us to use for board meetings, perhaps, you know, a high school or some other facility that we have could, you know, could substitute at least for a time. So we're looking at that. So, and then I'll let you view the upcoming committee meetings, if you're interested or, or part of those. And is there anything else that we need to, to handle yet this evening?
Keith, just to bring up, Director Bernard had brought up a question about retooling the first day of school. Did we want to set time for a discussion around that? Or how would we address that concern that she had?
Darren?
Well, we would need the board to act on our school, our approved school calendar. So I think we have a couple of options. We could schedule a special meeting to discuss it and move forward with that. Or we could do it at the August quarterly meeting. My concern with that is that's very late. And I think we need to let our parents know sooner than that if we're going to extend and not start our first day per the calendar.
Yeah, I would agree. We can't wait till the last minute to let parents know when school is starting. So I guess, you know, board members feeling on a, a special meeting?
This is Director Bernard. I'm in favor of a special meeting.
I'd be in favor of that as well.
Kimball, yes.
So are we looking at yet this week or next week? But what works for schedules? Darren and board members?
Yeah, we need 72 hours to post the meeting. So the soonest we could have it would be probably Thursday, which would be fine. We'll make sure that I, I can open up my schedule and, and come up with a time that works. If that's something you want to do yet this week, we could work on sending out some type of a survey on a time that could work. We could do it as a Zoom meeting. And if that's the only agenda item, it shouldn't take a lot of time.
So, yeah, I guess just in terms of having time to assemble meaningful information for the board to, to help make that decision, is, is that sufficient time yet this week? Or your thoughts?
Yeah, we, we could certainly make that a priority and get that information together.
Okay, so I guess earliest date would probably be the 13th. Or we're looking at, you know, probably next week?
Yeah, what's board members availability if we did it either Thursday or Friday this week?
I can make that work. I'm working hospital shifts until 6:00 PM, so that'd be, my preference would be to start at 6:00 instead of, that would be okay with everyone else?
Flexible.
6:00 PM on the 13th works, Ryan?
Yes, that would work.
Okay.
Works for Bettenhousen as well.
Okay.
It does not work for, it does not work for Kimball, but I can certainly express my feelings at some point if we come out with an agenda, or I'll be out of town.
Okay, Chris, does that work for you? I'm sorry.
It would appear to work for me.
Okay, so we have five out of six that works for 6:00 PM on the 13th. So I guess if that's okay, Joellen, you know, I'd like to be able to, to make this decision, let people know where we're at sooner rather than later. You know, otherwise we're, yeah, you know.
Yes. I, I could just, if I could just mention that one year, because of the calendar, we started with a three-day week, and then we had a four-day week, which was Labor Day. And then we had a five-day week. And it was a wonderful way to get kids slowly acclimated and back into school. And I think if we could shorten their first week, then they're gonna have a little less time to be concerned about their masks and the heat and, and to get used to being back in school again. So that's my opinion right now.
Okay, so it sounds like 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 13th, works for five out of the six of us. And if you're okay with that, Joellen, why don't we plan on that? Let's, Darren, let's post that as a, a special meeting. And we'll just have the one agenda item then.
Will do.
Okay. Anything else? Thanks, Ryan Pullman, for, you know, for remembering that. Anything else we need to handle yet this evening, or we adjourn? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Pullman so moved.
Motion by Director Pullman?
Second, Wilkie.
Second by Director Wilkie. If there's no discussion, we will vote by roll call vote, beginning with Director Bernard?
Aye.
Director Bernard votes aye. Director Bettenhousen?
Aye.
Director Bettenhousen votes aye. Director Camrath votes aye. Director Kimball?
Aye.
Director Kimball votes aye. Director Pullman?
Aye.
Director Pullman votes aye. And Director Wilkie?
Aye.
Director Wilkie votes aye, and the motion carries. We adjourn. Thank you all for a, a good meeting. Good evening.